Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Issues and Answers. It's City Council Candidate's Forum. My name is Ron Milhorn. I'm with KMTS Radio, the news director. I'll be your moderator tonight. This event is brought to you courtesy of tonight's sponsors, the Glenwood Springs Chamber Resort Association, Glenwood Springs Post Independent, KMTS, Cable Channel 10, and local State Farm Insurance Agents Jeff Leonard and Dee McCombe. Special thank you to the city of Glenwood Springs for allowing us to broadcast live from City Hall. This event is being broadcast live on Cable Channel 10. It will be rebroadcast March 7th, 8th, 12th, and 13th at noon, 7:00, and midnight on Cable Channel 10. A video of this forum will be available at glenwoodchamber.com. If you have any questions you'd like to ask of the candidates, please write them down on one of the forums provided on the table outside and bring them up to the question box in the front row. We'll do our best to get to as many questions as possible within the time restrictions. As the moderator, I will ask the questions of the candidates. Each candidate will give a two-minute opening statement. There will be a time limit of one minute assigned for answering questions. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute closing statement. Tonight's timer will be Susie Strauss. Thank you, Susie. She'll hold up a card reminding tonight's speakers that they have 30 seconds left to answer a question and also let them know when their time is up. The order for tonight's, we'll begin with at-large candidates, Tony Hershey, Catherine Troeger, and Kathy Williams. And we'll conclude with Ward One candidates Russ Arnsman and Steve Davis. The order of the candidates will be alphabetically by last name, and we will alternate. Begin with Tony Hershey, two-minute opening statement.
Good evening. As you said, my name is Tony Hershey, and I just want to begin by saying it's an honor to be running for city council. I really care about this community, and that is the major reason that I'm running. I think that Glenwood Springs is truly at a crossroads. We have a lot of exciting things and opportunities that are about to happen and some changes. But I see the future as very bright for Glenwood Springs. And I know there's going to be a lot of talk about a certain structure over here called the Bridge, but that's just really a small part of what's going on. I'm going to be an independent voice for city council. I'm not a member of any special interest. I'm pro-business, but I'm pro-people. I'm pro-kids. I'm pro-families. I'm pro-neighborhoods. Glenwood Springs is a great community. It's a very diverse community, and I think it needs some strong and decisive leadership because of these changes that are coming. But again, I'm very optimistic about the future. Just briefly about the Bridge, I think definitely, I think we've all been clear that that needs to be replaced. I think it would be silly to try to sort of pass up that opportunity, especially some of the issues that are going on at the federal level with the trust fund for the federal highways that may run out in next spring if Congress doesn't act. So I think that's important. I think our relationship with Garfield County is strained right now. I don't think it is as good as can be. I think it has to be a partnership. It's a family, but we're not like father-son. I think it has to be a stronger relationship between us. And finally, I really think that the people are not always being heard. I think there is a problem here at the city sometimes with the communication. And I'm not exactly clear whether it goes beyond some staff or leadership from the top, where I think that some people feel, or from the city council, where emails are not returned, where phone calls are not returned, and where I think maybe the average citizen feels that he doesn't have a voice. And that's going to be my job here, to make sure that everyone here in Glenwood has a voice. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tony. And I would echo Tony's excitement as well. A couple of weeks ago, I was asked a question that kind of caught me a little bit off-guard. And that question was what Glenwood means to me. Normally, I'm a person of a lot of words, but I had no words to express what I was feeling at the time. Only pictures came through my head. Pictures of my family while we were at the Hot Springs Pool, or when we were at the drive-in, getting ready to watch the movie and watching the sun go down. And the only word I could think of was love. And that is really what I feel for Glenwood Springs. Glenwood Springs is a place of change. It is not the same place that it was 61 years ago when my parents brought me here, nor 46 years ago when I moved here, nor 30 years ago when my children were born, or even two years ago when I started my blog. Glenwood Springs is in constant change. It's exciting, and it's scary. But life is about change. That's what it's all about. But I want to help shape that change. That's why I'm here. Glenwood Springs, you as citizens of Glenwood Springs need and deserve great leaders. You need strategic proactive leaders. And I have been preparing for this job for the last six years. I'm the leader that Glenwood Springs needs now. I'm ready to hit the road running, and I know there are complex issues. There are no easy answers. But together, you and I will make Glenwood Springs a strong, connected community.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kathy Williams. Thanks to the chamber, the paper, everybody that had us here tonight, the city, and it's nice to see you guys turn out in this crazy weather. I'm grateful to have this opportunity to meet the other candidates and to get to know you guys and have you know me. I've been around the valley for over 30 years. I raised my children here. I might be known better as Tyler and Joey's mom, and I'm very proud of that. Years ago, before I moved to the valley, I was the town clerk in Kremlin, Colorado. As the town clerk there, I was in the office alone, so I did everything. All the billing, all the accounts payable, all of the payroll, the budgeting, went to all the town board meetings, did all the minutes. And I had a feel, over those years, I really had a good feel for what happens to a city. We were confronted with having to build a water treatment plant, which for that community at that time was a huge endeavor. I've learned to work with other people really well. I'm willing to educate myself and become better informed with the issues. I have to agree with Tony that I hear also that people are not heard in this valley. And I'm here to give you guys a voice. I'm not trying to buy or sell anything. I want people to feel free to contact me and let me know what your opinions, concerns, and worries are, truly. I'm here to represent you, and I feel like that's what the job of a city council person is. Thanks.
First question, we'll begin with Catherine. Aside from the Grand Avenue Bridge project, the city has been working to update its long-range transportation plan. Have you reviewed the draft plan, and what are your non-Bridge transportation priorities?
Well, first of all, I would say that there is no draft. Currently, there is no draft transportation plan. Currently, the Transportation Commission, which I sit on, is in the process of reviewing and ranking over 100 different projects. My priorities are safety, increased connectivity between neighborhoods, shopping and work, and developing a transportation demand management program.
Kathy, one minute.
The transportation plan, I agree with you. It's complex. I've looked at it. I guess what it boils down to, there's historically one way in and one way out of this town and this valley, which I think is horrendous. The alternate route has helped a little bit, but it has not removed traffic or Highway 82 from running down the middle of our town. We're going to live with the new bridge. That's been decided. And I think that we can plan better in the future for helping the businesses downtown, our pedestrians, and our community, and our tourists that come here. They come, but will they return? I'm not sure.
One minute, Tony.
One minute.
I had some concerns with the plan about moving traffic off of Grand onto local streets to alleviate. I mean, there've been a lot of, as Kathy says, there isn't a draft, but there's been plans, and I have some concerns. But I think I agree that one major issue is pedestrian safety and access. I live on the other side of Grand Avenue on 11th and Cooper, and just getting across Grand Avenue should not be this difficult. I don't understand. I was at the high school today, crossing back the other way at Grand takes forever. And I think when you discourage pedestrians, you increase traffic and you increase, because it's sometimes easier for people to take their cars. I also think a solution that we might want to look at is a bridge by the high school at 14th Street to Midland to alleviate some of that downtown traffic if you're going, or they're coming the other way, going to Walmart, to avoid downtown, where I think a lot of the issues are. We do have a highway running through our town, and that is an issue. But there are things we can do, including traffic calming, I think, to slow down traffic on Grand, including media and stuff that can help. Once the bridge is completed, I think that's something we need to look at, too. Thank you.
Begin with, next question with Kathy.
Do you support future annexation of the four-mile corridor for residential development? And what must happen in the meantime to accommodate growth in that area?
Obviously, the infrastructure is not there to support further development. And I think it depends on what sort of development are we talking about. We need to look at the impact on the roads, on our schools, on our city services. Are they adequate to do this? Do they want to build more mansions, or do they want to build housing for locals? I don't know that, and I'm not sure that I would support that annexation prior to these things being thought out.
Tony, one minute.
No, absolutely not. And Russ can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was a vote on this issue, and it was soundly defeated. You want to, residential area is not going to pay for that infrastructure. So you want to, if you, I don't understand the advantage of annexing that sort of area. You're going to create more traffic on Midland, and it's not going to pay for the infrastructure that you're going to have to do. I understand the need for housing in other areas and that question, but I mean, the voters have spoken very loudly on this issue. I am concerned about the urban growth boundary, and I think it would be a very bad mistake to go around just sort of annexing areas that are not naturally within this community. This is another area, though, I think that we have to work with, as I mentioned briefly in my opening statement, with the Garfield County Commissioners and what their view for that area is, and with their planning and developing people, because I think that's important. But I just think right now that that is a bad idea, and again, the voters have rejected it, so I certainly respect their will. Thank you.
I would agree with much of what Tony said. As far as working with the county, I would agree with that. Absolutely no development up in that area until, at least three things need to happen. We need South Bridge. We need Midland improvements. And we need to replace the 27th Street Bridge. We've got to eliminate that bottleneck.
Next question. The city has joined other local governments in opposing oil and gas leasing in the Thompson-Divide region, primarily due to concerns about using four-mile and the Midland Avenue, 27th Street access to Highway 82 as an industrial haul route. Do you support this position, and why? Tony.
I think I do now. I think this issue is sort of resolving itself, as you saw in the front page of the paper, with oil and gas prices, but that could change. So I think it's important. Again, I'm going to sound like a broken record. Another area where I think commissioners are, the county commissioners have to be consulted, where we have to talk to them, but I just don't think it's a good idea. I was on Midland the other day, going to Soper's Elementary. That road is stressed. And as Catherine said, unless you're looking at a South Bridge, unless you improve 27th Street, even if traffic, I know that they have, companies have ideas for alternate routes headed south, but I think that that's not in the cards. So I think it's good that we have joined in opposing this. But again, I think sometimes events get ahead of us, and the economics of this may take care of itself, at least in the meantime. But I think that this is a good thing. Thank you.
Yes, I do support this position. Their oil and gas development in the Thompson-Divide region and using Midland as an industrial haul route has an impact on our residents. It has an impact on our tourism, and that is our lifeblood. And it has an impact on our infrastructure, and we simply cannot allow that.
Thanks, Catherine.
Obviously, well, not obviously, but no, I do not support drilling. I do not support the oil and gas industry. They've come in and taken over a lot of the Rocky Mountains, this entire area where the gas is abundant, shale oil fields. They came in with immunity against clean air, clean water, and that's not right, and they should not be allowed to continue. I've looked into fracking, and I understand the dangers of it. And I'm totally disagreeing for a beautiful and pristine area like Thompson-Divide to be developed for gas and oil. It's supposed to be a bridge fuel, a bridge to renewable resources, and that's what I hope we strive to work toward. Thanks.
Concerns have been raised by downtown business owners and tourism promoters about the local homeless transient population and loitering and panhandling around the downtown area. What can city council do to address these concerns? Catherine.
This is a really tough issue, and many, many communities face this issue. Glenwood is not alone. Boulder and other communities have this problem as well. There are no easy answers, and I really have no solutions for this. I would suggest that what we can do is we can create vibrant, family-oriented places and manage those places very well. I would also suggest that we discourage the reasons for people to gather there, the transient population to gather there. And I would also direct and support Glenwood Springs Police Department in maintaining an active and ongoing presence by use of bikes and walking in that area.
Kathy.
I feel pretty strongly about this. I've been to feed my sheep. I've spoken to Karen, the woman that runs the program. And between our 30 to 50, depending on the time of the year, the homeless numbers of people really do abide by the laws, and they do have rules there. It can take one or two people that transient people or people that aren't familiar with our community to break the rules and make the whole group look bad. They have a decent home to stay in. Glenwood used to provide them with $10,000 a year to help, and that was cut last year to $2,000 a year. And this year, there is no funding for our homeless. They're a part of our population, a really sad part of our population, and I believe that we should try to help them out. Thanks. Oh, no, let me say that Karen said, I asked her if I could quote her, she said, "Please don't judge us." Thank you.
Tony. I'm certainly sympathetic, as Kathy is, but I think there is a solution. This is a criminal justice issue in many ways. And, you know, we don't certainly have the population problems that Los Angeles or New York or even Boulder or Denver have. But if you prosecute for minor offenses, you have solutions. There was a big article today about LA Skid Row, and in the '70s, they stopped prosecuting, and they brought all the services to one place, and they have created a disaster there. If you have services and you sort of concentrate them in one area, and you attract it and create this area, which we don't have fortunately, you create a lot of problems. Some of these people, unfortunately, having worked in the criminal justice system, have mental health issues that need to be addressed, and I think that that's really important. But whether it's Judge Zerbi next door, or Judge Metzger across the street or across the way, prosecuting these people and who, because it's not fair to local businesses and local neighborhoods if people are making noise, if there's public disorder, if there's urination, it's not fair. If there's theft and other small crimes, and that's what happens. I'm not a huge fan either, and I'll just wrap it up with that, of that pavilion either. I think that that needs to be addressed, and I think the police department needs to do that as well. Thank you.
Some council candidates have questioned the effectiveness of the current city management to get things done. Is it time for a shakeup? Kathy.
That's a tough question. It's always easy to place the blame on someone else. I think that we should be able to learn to work together as a community with your voices and your views and your opinions being heard, and the council working together to try to solve some of these problems, working together, cooperating with each other, compromise. I'm not sure what a shakeup means. Are we talking about eliminating certain employees or positions? I just, I don't feel comfortable with that at all. I think that, I think it's easy to place blame until we really look into things.
Tony.
Like Kathy, I think it's inappropriate to discuss anyone specifically, and I don't know exactly where this is coming from. The city charter permits the city council to employ three people, the city attorney, the municipal court judge, and the city manager. Those are the only positions. If there's a part of this community that has a problem with the development director or other things, or there are issues, change the ordinances. I think staff, there is this leadership from above, but there's leadership from council, too, that this is how we want to behave. And if, as Kathy and I were talking about earlier, if the government isn't responsive, I think that comes from this table here as well. I think I am concerned a little bit about access, just even calling this city hall, you get into that voicemail tree, why aren't their direct dial numbers more accessible? I know they're on the website. But it's hard sometimes to reach people, and I think maybe that's the perception. But I don't think, to talk about, a shakeup sounds sort of like we're going to go around firing a bunch of people, and I don't think that that's appropriate, and I wouldn't do that. Thank you.
Running a city government is a complex issue. It's not easy, and it takes, like Kathy said, a lot of people working together. I do believe that we need to take a very close look and evaluate the resources that are currently being allocated to determine if we are being the most effective and the best use of your taxpayer dollars. As far as I'm concerned, there are no sacred cows, and that includes city council.
Okay. A question from a member of the audience. We'll start with Tony. How will you take care of and/or pay attention to businesses outside of the downtown core?
I think that's a very good question. You know, Glenwood Springs is not just, you know, this little area from Cooper to Grand and from like 7th to 9th or 10th Street. It certainly goes beyond that. And it's not just those businesses, those neighborhoods. And I know that sometimes even businesses outside Grand are forgotten about, are outside, off of Grand Avenue. But I think it's important that the community be very, or the city council be very supportive of those, and including the other area. This bridge project's going to create some trauma, I think, initially here and for the businesses here, but I think it's going to affect businesses all along Grand Avenue and also on the other side of town. Whenever there's this connectivity issue, whenever there's going to be troubles commuting, whenever there's going to be problems tourists getting to different businesses. We have a wide range of businesses. We have a wide range of communities and neighborhoods. And, you know, if you're sitting at this table, you represent every business, not just the ones right outside the door, and not just the neighborhoods right here, but the entire city within the boundary. And I think it's important to be responsive to all of them. Thank you.
Kathy.
Well, there's a document that the city has, and it's called the Comprehensive Plan. And in the Comprehensive Plan, it identifies several secondary business centers. And those need to be looked at, need to be developed. We need to develop partnerships with the business community and the residences in those areas to develop those areas to their fullest potential. Tony's right. There are no, it's wider. The city is a huge area, and we need to take care of the businesses from all ends.
Yes, I agree. And tourists come into town, and they want to know, is that it? That couple of blocks of Grand Avenue? They want to know where they can go. It is, and it can be confusing. They built that new Meadows Shopping Center, but from the interstate, you can't even figure out how to get there. There's no signs. There's no direction. They drive by and want to go to Target, but I wouldn't know how to get there. It's just confusing. We just, and we need, I think, friendlier pedestrian services in our town for tourists that come here. I personally ride the bus, and it's difficult. And I hear from an entirely different perspective, people that are out riding the bus and trying to get around Glenwood. Yes, our businesses are important all over town, from West Glenwood to South Glenwood. And we do, we need to all work together and find better answers than the way it is now.
Next question, we'll begin with Catherine. What experience do you have in public service that prepares you to be a council member?
Well, I actually was deputy city clerk here in Glenwood Springs for a number of years in the late 1990s, early 2000s, worked under Robin Unsworth. And I'm also been active in planning and zoning. I currently chair the Planning Commission and have for about four years. I'm a member of the Transportation Commission. I have been a member of the Financial Advisory Board and the Vail Board here. And I'm just a very interested citizen, and I love to blog about the issues that Glenwood has.
Kathy.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. What experience do you have in public service that prepares you to be a council member?
Public service? I have some. Like I mentioned earlier, as the town clerk of Kremlin for three years. And I've been a teacher in this community. I've been a mother in this community. I'm a cancer survivor. I feel like I can empathize with people. I'm a good listener, and I'm ready to try to work with others to really, truly serve my community. I feel like that's, I should be helping others with whatever time is left to me here. I feel grateful for this time to be able to try to get to know you guys, and I'm just ready to serve.
Tony. I promised myself I wouldn't bring up the A-word, but some of you may know that 12 or 13 years ago, I served on the Aspen City Council for four years. So there's that. But, and that's some experience, I will tell you, if some of you know. I've also served when I was there on the Raptor Board and various boards and youth boards, and I've worked with Youthstone here. And I've also, I consider being a deputy district attorney, public service as well. One area of focus that I seem to have is kids in this community, and I think that's so important and such an important resource. And to focus on kids, I am a coach of the mock trial team, we're going to state, which is exciting, at the high school. And keeping kids not just interested in what's going on in the government and stuff, but having them stay in the community. I always get concerned, whether it's Aspen or Glenwood, or even a place like Boulder, that, you know, sometimes the young kids move away and they don't come back. I think that's an important area of focus. I'm going to bring the experience that I have from all of that government experience, including as a lawyer, as a negotiator, to this table, and that's, I think, a useful tool at this table. Thank you.
We'll move on to closing statements. One minute, and we'll begin with Catherine.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who has been here and listened to us for about 30 minutes, and I appreciate your time. It's now time for you to move from being a spectator to being a participant. In a couple of weeks, you're going to receive a ballot in the mail, and you have the choice of who to, who you want to represent you. There is too much at stake to sit on the sidelines. I'm incredibly excited by the opportunities in Glenwood Springs to represent you. I have the vision, knowledge, dedication, and accountability to serve, and I am looking so forward to doing that. So please come join me in making Glenwood Springs a strong, connected community.
Thanks.
Kathy.
Okay. I'm thinking perhaps we haven't always I'm thinking perhaps we haven't always made the best decisions in the past. And that's okay. We're going to make things better from here on out. And that shouldn't slow us down or stop us from improving things. It's our job to do that in this community that we live in. And our community's been divided. People live in Parachute and drive to Aspen just to make a living and support their families. I think it's important that we try to make our community more cohesive, that we have better communication, that people who feel like they haven't been represented and haven't been heard are given a voice and share their vision with us so that we're giving them the opportunity to help make these decisions. I'm nobody to sit here and make a decision based on my own opinions. I want to hear that first from you. Thanks.
I want to thank the chamber, but I really want to thank Kathy and Catherine. This has been a really great exchange. I wish we had more time, because this is, these are some great issues. If you want change and you want a responsive voice, vote for me. If you're not pleased with the status quo and how things are going, please vote for me. If you want a functioning government that listens to the people, and that means all the people, not just a few special interests, then please vote for me. Yes, you know, I'm, I'm all for funding tourists and tourist-related things like fireworks, but I also think we need to fund community things. I think Kathy mentioned one area where I think funding would be helpful, too, to make sure that it's not just, you know, the local businesses and the businesses right in this area, but the entire community in the neighborhoods. I do promise you one thing, that if you vote for me, that I will return every single phone call, every single email, every text. I don't really tweet, but I'll learn. Tweet or whatever form of communication you want, I will call you back and I will email you, or I will get back to you. I think that that is really important, because not everyone has all the time to be at these meetings. And I will be your representative here and speak for you. And if you need me, I will be here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I think we'll take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll continue with the Ward One candidates.